Jim Richardson coming? Is that vacation?
Oh, I didn't even know that. Yeah. Oh, that's even worse.
Sorry.
Or no, maybe it was. Must have been.
Free, free time.
Why can't the hearing come so we can?
Right. All right, we'll go ahead and get started. So you have called order, Ryan and Dykhorst.
Lori Novak.
Dana Bergner.
Jim is on vacation and Lizzie, far as I know, she should be coming. Nobody on Zoom, so. Make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Second.
I'm not sure discussion. All those in favor, say hi by saying hi.
Hi.
As they know, approved. Public forum is a three minute time limit for person. The city council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to city business and must adhere to data privacy rules. No employee's name may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. We also request that your comments be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be recognized only once. At this time, we ask that you, if you'd like to speak, to address the city council, please step forward in the podium and state your name, address, and fill out the form. Yes, we got forms, correct?
Yes.
Paper.
Jan Trossen raised the council tonight. I see the walls going today. Now my concern is I stopped there, they got into my water that I had covered up. They're all the way back into my water main. It's all been exposed now. They said they can bring down street level. I really have concerns about that, that they've gone back almost up to the easement with tearing the hill over from just a little section they've taken. So I'm just addressing the city council. I have concerns on how they're going to address my, my, my water shuttle.
So. Kane, would you want to respond to that?
Yeah, we can, we can talk outside.
Okay. So much trouble anyway, I got another meeting. But the second thing I rise to is, as I read the paper and some wrote a paper, I was a little disappointed in the article that was in the paper about statements that were made at the council meeting here. I feel that has no place at a council meeting whatsoever. We should represent all individuals and treat everybody as equals. If we don't, what happens? We end up dividing the community. Having said that, I would like to also say is that I think why maybe some people haven't signed this, this thing and one of the people on that address said they spoke quite a while with a person that was concerned about the sewer hookup. And I can't mention the name, but one of the council members said that at the last meeting and talked for a long time. And Mr. Palin said, well, you know, we sent letters out. I think it's important that you talk to the citizens. If they have concerns, that their concerns are addressed. There's a trust factor here. I have a trust factor with the council, with some members on the council for past actions that's going on. So I can understand why maybe some people haven't signed the agreement or done whatever, because there might be a trust issue. I think maybe the council should, the city manager, whatever, should call the people and ask them, did you get the letter? And talk to them personally, are there some issues or whatever? Public forums open and everything else. A lot of these issues could be addressed by just having a conversation with the people that don't do that versus always just sending them a letter or whatever, because, you know, some people just don't quite understand. So I, I think that's important to, to, to be able to do that, to move what you guys want, want to move along. The other issue I stand on right, because of water main and everything else, when I listened to your last meeting, you guys were all confused on curb stops and the water main and everything else. If you're confused, how can the residents sign something or do something? So now my question in Rochester, if I have a break in the water main in the street, I'm not paying to dig the street up. That's not my cost. That's the city's cost. The curb stop where they shut my water on off to my property is what I'm responsible for. I guess what I heard in the last meeting minutes, it was that I would be responsible for repairing the street when the main breaks, which I don't understand. I've never understood that in any city that, that the water does that. And that's how, as I watched your meeting over and over, I guess I wasn't clear, because I was kind, I was kind of left with a thing that if the water main breaks up the street here across my property and they dig the road up, I got to pay for that fixing the road, which my stop comes to the curb. So I guess I, maybe in our water bill, all I can suggest is that maybe in the water bill, maybe we explain that in our water bill that either from the curb stop back, I'm responsible for, or what am I, you know, if something freezes or happens, what am I responsible for? And you know.
Questions, and that's why we're having again an open house tomorrow, four to seven. That's for the little pressure easement. So just to address your one comment, Stantac has a real estate agent that's been talking to everybody. They personally give everybody a call, and we have a lot of people coming in tomorrow to sign the easement, so.
Well, I'm not one of the first to get alerted, because mine, you know, it all runs downhill for me. What's that?
Grabby's no problem.
Yeah, right. So that's what they told me, mine would be running downhill, so I.
Can I ask you a question? Are you referring to my comment, that section about my comment?
I just, I just read the paper once it was put out there, and I read that and I, and I saw that. And when I show it to people and say, this is what the paper prints.
But it's not what I said.
Well, I don't, my point is, is that he said, he said, she said, it says, I'm just telling you is that once it gets printed, I've been on the other side of the things printing and, and when, what happens is you can retract anything you want. You get as much.
So just to address that, we have talked to the paper. We're moving. I have, you can watch it, you watch, you watch all the YouTube videos. I, I know you do. You can watch what I said. I'm, and I can talk to you.
Well, my three minutes are up, and I can do that. I just.
I would love to talk to you personally about what I did say, and you can watch a video too, because that's not what I said. And it has been addressed with the paper.
Anyway, I got another meeting.
Okay.
I got two meetings tonight, I got a ten, and I'm on air next day, but thank you. But please, my water thing, that's my utmost concern. I don't want, I don't want any issues with my water freezing. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak in public forum?
Do I just write my name on here? Is that what I do? Okay. Hi, my name is Nell Campo. I've lived on West Center Street for the past 24 years. Speeding on that road has been an issue the whole time that I've lived there. Even when it was a gravel road, people were speeding on that road. That doesn't mean that it's right, that it's happened that long. But I feel that there is a correct way of dealing with it and an incorrect way of dealing with it. We have city council members that are working with law enforcement, and I know, I've, I've heard what you've done. I've read in the minutes what you've, what you're working on. I see the sign that's posted, waiting to be hooked up. I know that there's work that's being done. And I really believe that that is the proper way to manage it, to manage it, to keep the road and our neighborhood safe. There's also a wrong way of doing it. And that, that situation is where members of the neighborhood are policing the neighborhood themselves, stalking people's driveways, posting signs with profanity on it, calling people names on social media like a cow and like mayor shithead, which I'm sorry, I didn't do it, but I'm just saying that's what's on there. And that's so disrespectful, and it's mean. It's mean. It's not the kind of things that, that a neighborhood should do. It's causing neighbors, it's causing children, it's causing people to have anxiety and to, to feel like they're living in fear. And it's just not neighborly. We live out in this small town so that we can be neighborly. We need to focus on the matter at hand, and I think that's what we all agree on, is that the speeds need to be decreased by all motorists, by cars, by gators, by motorcycles on West Center Street. We need to let our, our city council members and our mayor work with law enforcement, which they're doing. They're doing it to get this accomplished. And then the rest of us, our job is to focus on being supportive and kind and neighborly. I just want to take this moment to thank our mayor and our city council members for doing what they're doing to work with law enforcement to keep our neighborhood safe. I really do appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak in public forum?
Sorry for me stepping in late. My name is Stephen Narland. I live at eight forty-five First Street Northwest Orinoco. I am one of those that is opposed to the easement agreements for the city sewer project. It's my understanding, as I read and as my attorneys have read, that you are serving me a blanket easement. Blanket easements make my home unmarketable. No mortgage company, no lending institution will ever finance a blanket easement. Why does it take 4.4 acres to put an inch and a quarter line 280 feet into my home? I have asked that Sam Tech come out to my home, which they have. We have walked it with them, and I was lied to by our city engineer at the open house that he said that these, everybody had to have an easement and that none of them would be surveyed. There's numerous neighbors out there that have in their agreement exactly the dimensions where that line is going to go in, except mine and a few others in the neighborhood. And I think that should be a disgrace to this city sewer committee and our city engineer and the council. Thank you.
We do have. An open house tomorrow from four to seven, and then Wednesday from nine to noon, and again, four to seven. So please feel free to come in and answer anybody's questions. Second final call for.
Hi, I'm Joe Plumbow. I live on two ten Shady Ridge Lane Southwest. I'm here to back up now for the issues that we've been having in our cul-de-sac and also off of Pine Ridge. The sign that is posted off of Center Street that had vulgarity on it. These people drive their vehicles, it's a side by side around our neighborhood, driving up and down people's driveways, looking in garages for vehicles and license plates for information on whoever it is that they think that's speeding. All of us in our cul-de-sac has talked about getting security cameras. This is ridiculous. I've been here 16 years. I have another neighbor, Kara, that's been here 16 years as well. This is, I've never seen anything like it. We've moved here for the fact of having privacy. There is no reason why someone who has been here less than five years thinks that they can control our neighborhood. It's a shame. It's ridiculous, and there are numerous people that have complained about it and have talked about it and have had issues with this. According to social media, they were supposed to have a car group that was supposed to gather at that house and drive around and search out people that they deem are speeding. He got booted off the Orinoco Facebook page because of it. This is just absolute ridiculous behavior that needs to be controlled, and something needs to be done about it. There's no reason why we got to live in a community that's dealing with this hostility. Thank you.
Third final call? No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. First time doing this, Kara, last name Carter Cleveland. I live in the same neighborhood as Joe, and just kind of reiterating what we've been seeing. Been there a little while, and some of this new stuff coming up is obviously really bothersome. We all are raising children there, and we're all concerned about the speeding that's been going on up and down center. There's no one that's not concerned about it, but we can also be concerned about vulgarity out there for our kids to see going up and down the road as well. And I think if you have a neighborhood watch, you can have a neighborhood who comes together, but a neighborhood doing what some of this is going on is not okay. Children aren't going to feel safe. They don't want to be outside, you know, alone or have the garages open. That's not okay where we live. I sit so far back from the road with GPS, no one comes down my driveway to the wrong address anymore. It just doesn't happen, and it's happened quite a bit in the last two, three weeks, two weeks. And it's getting out of hand, and I know you guys are working on something for the speeding, and you have been. So I hope you guys keep up the good work. And aside from maybe bringing in more law enforcement, if there's little speed bumps that can be put in during non-wintertime and removed, I don't know what you guys have plans for, but.
Part of our discussion, and we'll touch on it tonight as far as an update.
That going on? Okay, I appreciate you listening to our concerns. Thank you.
Third final call, public hearing.
I'm not sure if I'm on the schedule for Brandon Redkey for the storage.
No, you're not, sir. Was it something coming out of planning and zoning or?
Yeah, I've been through planning and zoning.
I'm sorry, there's nothing on the agenda. Were you at the last meeting?
No, that's why I'm here.
That's probably why nothing came out of the minutes.
I talked to one of them. It's just, they just be on display, they're sold online. It's not really, they're just, they're premier buildings and similar to what I have, and they'd be on display and sold online.
I'm sorry.
We have, we were on the agenda last month.
Well, they, they, they just, they told me the day of the meeting, and I didn't, I didn't get. Called me in the afternoon or whatever, so I don't. I never realized I was supposed to be here, but.
So Brandon, you're right. I'm sorry, it was the June meeting, it was supposed to come back in the July meeting, and. Looking through the minutes, so. We'll make sure it's on the August meeting.
Well, is there, we just, there's.
We've already set the agenda for tonight, which is why we can't go back and change your agenda. And it's, there's nothing in the packet about it either, so that's what.
What needs to be talked about, I guess? What are you, what are you looking at, or what are you looking for? Something, other?
He was just selling those little, he was just going to sell those little smaller sheds, you know, like what he has.
So Mayor, they asked. They asked for an opinion on it, I said, I'm just looking at it, I sent an opinion. I thought that basically the substance of that was it's not entirely clear and that the planning and zoning commission should review my advice and the city code, make it determined. So I'm not sure if that ever happened, isn't that on June 15th? So I mean, I did put it on planning and zoning, no. I mean, I did suggest planning and zoning, review it, so they didn't review it.
They passed it on to, to the city council.
We never get a response from Paul. Mike, Mike put up his responses to Paul. Renee forwarded it, and Renee never got a response from Paul on it.
Okay.
That's the catch up that I got. It's not much, but that's what I remember.
Was it the sign? You a sign you wanted to put up to with that?
No, the little sheds, right? Yeah.
To be a distributor for premier buildings. So again, it's not on our agenda, Brandon, I'm sorry. Back in August, we'll make sure it's on the agenda. We'll get back to P and Z, we sent a note to P and Z, and they never responded back. That part of the problem, we just have to get a response back, so. That's why it's not on the agenda tonight.
That's going to send things back with, yeah. So am I on the agenda now officially, or?
I'm sorry.
Am I on the agenda now for?
Now you, you're on the agenda.
I just don't want to come in here again and they go, what?
Third final call? City Council will close at seven or six fifty-two. If you're coming forward, any comments to share with us?
Sergeant Brady Woolheart, Sheriff's Office. I'm here again on behalf of Sergeant Chambers, he's off today. He did kind of fill me in on some of the stuff that's been going on with the Facebook posting and the speed related issues. Sounds like he's been working with you on some ideas to kind of quell that and see what we can do about getting more directed targeted speed enforcement at certain times of day. It sounds like there's a speed sign up on West Center now. I think his plan is to post it at the various problem areas to collect some data, see what times of days are the big problem areas, so that we can try and get people in the area at those times as best we can. Some issues or struggles that we have from our perspective are staffing, their ability to get up here when we're available can be a problem at those specific times. I did see on the agenda there some talk about hiring overtime or some specific extra patrol, hiring a deputy to work those areas.
Sergeant Chambers for some background information.
Okay. I don't have any more information specifics on that. I do know that is something that we have done in the past, but it has to get kind of pre-approved and set up and things like that. But once we have information on the time of day and days of the week, that might help you guys understand when specifically to ask for that shift for that deputy to come in and specifically work traffic. As far as people coming up, looking in the garage doors and things like that, obviously that's a concern. If that happens, you give us a call.
So I would say, I leave to go to work roughly about six thirty to six forty-five. That's when it's a nightmare with speeders coming up more further up from Shady Ridge. And then right around about four thirty, between four thirty and five, you'll have that nightmare of people coming up on that frontage road, I mean, it changes names or whatever, the Minnesota. Yeah, and it's, it's just ridiculous.
AM, PM morning commute.
Yeah, more, yeah. Mid-afternoon isn't bad. I mean, you know, I, I work for them. We live right next to each other, but the lunchtime commute is perfectly fine. You don't see it at all. It's that early, I would say six thirty to probably eight timeframe. My wife, she leaves about six thirty-ish, works at mail. She has the same thing where all of a sudden you pull out of Shady Ridge, going down Center Street, and all of a sudden you have someone right on your bumper. They're like, where did this person come from? And they're riding all the way up past Casey's, all the way up to twelve, the consulate. And it's just that whole front of the road right there, and then up Center Street. And most of them are past Shady Ridge, and it's either the gravel road or that next street up. It's just, it's insane. You don't see much by where the signs posted, but that's where the disturbance is coming from.
I mean, we've all talked about adding, obviously there's cameras and stuff that can be thrown. We all have private properties, but the driveway, I mean, we have, we have long driveways, they're definitely. You can tell they're private driveways.
Both of ours are probably at least 400 feet long, and you have people pulling up the driveway, looking in your garage.
No, no, no one comes to the door at any of these times when even our kids have been home. And my elder mom was out watching, out around weekends. They don't come to the door, but they stop.
I don't know what they're doing down Silver Ridge, but they're patrolling the whole area. And I don't know if they go up into the upper cul-de-sacs and stuff either. Yeah, side by side are vehicles.
And just to add one more thing, and I'm sorry it's taking a lot of time, but my son, they said he was speeding past their house, and maybe he was, he's not perfect. But he, the gentleman was in his yard, got in his truck and met my son at the end of our driveway. So he had to speed to get to my driveway, to yell at my son for speeding past his house. And so it's just, it's not, it's not a joyful neighborhood, and it's just taking the joy.
It has never been like this ever before, ever.
Twenty-four years.
And this, this is the first city, city council meeting that I've ever attended for the fact that this is passionate with all of us, because we have private areas, and this is, I mean, I've wanted to get more involved, but I just have stuff to do. And this, this is getting concerning.
Raising families, and we have the concerns, we're concerned about the speeding too. And we're very clear on that.
Sergeant, do you suggest they call 911 or they call the?
The non-emergency number?
Say nine emergency.
Okay, good to know.
Can you? Have that on your phones?
Unless somebody's actively like aggressive with you, getting in your face, that's a 911 situation. Somebody that's going up looking in your windows and leaving. As far as I, I personally, and I know a lot of other people have, when they've had the opportunity, sat on Lake West Center and Sumra Hills, Minnesota Avenue. The times that we've been able to get there hasn't produced a lot of traffic stops for speeding. Some of those areas, like Sumra Hills especially, the windy up and down, even if you're going the speed limit at 30, it looks like a citizen standing in their driveway, it looks like they're hauling on that road, but in reality, they're actually going the speed limit. So I know just the way that it can be an optical illusion, cars going around corners and up and down hills, it can look faster than it actually is, which is probably some of what people are experiencing.
Yeah, I think the data will, no doubt it will show some of that, you know.
You know, someone just approached.
Several issues going on here, so.
Someone just approached deputy the other day asking about speed, I think it was in Sumra Hills, but about lowering the speed limit down to like 25 or something, which the city would be able to do, so.
That's an option we're considering.
Sure.
Pros and cons both ways.
There is, yeah. But it sounds like you and Sergeant Chambers are actively working on things. There are options out there. It might take a little more on the city's part to, to hire somebody specifically to work specific times, just because it's, we're shorthand and it's busy, so.
Part of the times that were mentioned are your shift times.
Yep, six o'clock is when our shift changes.
Understood, yeah, I understand that.
We do have a power shift that covers shift change in the afternoon, but they're usually taking calls.
And I know you guys are typically, I, I've seen you guys, I don't know, in the last three, four weeks are right by that solar area right by that dog training place on Minnesota Avenue there, right by Tilly's. Unfortunate during that time where you probably are getting ready to switch because it's late afternoon, which, I mean, it is what it is, but.
I'm on night shift right now, a lot of, to be perfectly honest, a lot of times when I get up here, because we're contracted for an hour and a half.
Correct.
In the day and night. It's at that three AM timeframe when you call and stuff.
Right?
We only have three times to do our extra stuff.
Yep.
And three AM patrol isn't a bad thing, it's just not specific to.
You know, yeah, you're not having hot spots and stuff.
But just your presence, we really appreciate your presence.
Thank you. Citizens coming in like two, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much. Stan, fire department?
Evening. So we'll start with the runs, so I'll, the one that we had last week is not on here because I had already sent the city council my runs, but I do just want to make what we talk about, since it probably is fresh on the mind, so as you saw, we had a pretty good house fire, knock on wood, we don't get those things a lot, so. The call came in as somebody driving on the highway saw a large, so it came out as a outside fire. And then as we were responding, then it came across at a different address saying fully involved structure fire, and that's just right when I was driving by, and pretty hard to see how, how full it was. So right away, we called for Pine Island and Mazepa to help us because just manpower, when you have a big fire like that, plus there's no hydrants in that area, so we knew we were gonna have to shuttle water. So it worked out really well, we had our engine, we had two drop tanks, we had people feeding it from both sides. So between the three departments, water was not an issue. You know, and as, as more manpower came on, we were, you know, throwing as much water on it as we could. We were concerned because the car wasn't in the driveway in the time of day, you know, that we were thinking that the homeowner would be home. It wasn't until, of course, that we knocked pretty much all the smoke, and we'd done multiple search and rescues, but it wasn't until later that then we found the homeowner in her bedroom. So, kind of sad, so we did what we could, the excavator then, so the fire marshal, we had called him, he came out, you know, did his investigation, we had a backhoe come in and knock down some of the roof because it was just smoldering, and it was smolder for quite a long time, so we just pulled that off, soaked it the best we could, so we were probably on the scene for six, seven hours in total. And then this yesterday morning, it, there was a little spot underneath the the front porch, which was an add-on, something must have been smoldering, it just got enough, so just a little bit of fire, so yesterday morning went out there and put a couple thousand gallons on that spot to make sure it doesn't, doesn't go again, so. So sad to, you know, have a structure like that, especially when you know somebody, and again, all the years, I've never had a fatality. I've, I've seen, I've come across car accidents with people, but it was the first time I've ever had a homeowner suffering a fire, so that's too bad, so again, I think we did everything we could have done, but we'll see, the, you know, the fire marshal has his idea, the you know, insurance agencies signed off on his opinion, so we're I think we're, hopefully they'll move on and do something with that property, hopefully it doesn't sit like that for a long amount of time.
So I'm seeing this fireworks, fire.
Yep. Yeah, we did have that one, so I can, yeah, so I meant, it sounds like I had two guys, so it sounds like something lit up and zipped over there, and then while they were over there, it was just out of reach across the water.
I was watching him like that.
Yeah, so he talked about, so they got another vehicle and, yeah, soaked it out, so it was good that, that they were there. So the calls that, you know, I did, we had a lift assist, so again, the fire, the fire department gets called for lift assist just because we bring early guys, I guess, and so we do lift assist, whereas medicals will be the first responders. We had, somebody thought there was a little grass fire or transformer or something burnt out, it ended up being fireworks. Somebody lit off some fireworks and you can kind of even see it, a little streak on the road, and then it lit something. So by the time we got there, it was out, so we soaked it just to make sure that it was like dark thirty at night, so I didn't want to come back, so there was some water on it. Then we had, on the tenth was Mazepa had their fireworks that Saturday night, and so we usually send up a crew to kind of sit there and help them so that they can do the fireworks, and our guys could just, if there was like ours, if there was a little hospital or something that came up. So unfortunately, our guys were in a tanker, and they were just leaving town when they came across a car crash that was north of town. And so they stayed there, and there was, almost at the exact same time, there was a motorcycle crash at a dead end right by it, and Pine Island didn't get called for the first one, or as they should have, and then we didn't get, for first responders, we didn't call the second one, and we should have, so it was kind of a madhouse, but so our guys did the best they could to provide, you know, patient care until the ambulance could get there, and you know, the car did start smoldering a little bit, so we threw some water on it, and then they took off and went to the fireworks. They also had a transformer go off, Mazepa days, but then on the seventeenth, probably saw on the paper, we had a pretty busy day, so started off, you know, early morning, I think it was three, four in the morning, Sembro, on the township, there was a structure fire on the water, so that was a pretty, again, fully engulfed, they think it started by lightning, so Pine Island called us for mutual aid in Rochester, so we were giving them support with water and manpower. And then after we were clearing that, but they were still there, then something, not quite sure what, but something was, was going on the highway. It caused sparks, I don't know if it was a lawnmower, or if it was chains on a semi or something, but there was multiple fires on the highway, so we, we had guys, Rochester had guys, and of course Pine Island is their territory, but they were with a structure fire, so we went up and down the highway, so as you saw, there's probably, there was a couple dark spots there, Seventy-Fifth, front of Tilly's, North, it was, again, you'd be curious to know exactly what was lighting it, but it was so dry and something, so. So that was kind of some excitement, that was a long day for some of my guys. Yeah, that was a busy month, usually I don't have much for you, so that's, I don't, I don't need these. So I have a firefighter that I brought on, and, you know, like life kicked in, he is relocating, so unfortunately, he had to resign, so Bryce Christensen has resigned for our department, he's only on a few months. Also, he, very excited, I was, I was getting kind of excited, you know, you get a new guy on who is, likes to come to things, and then now he's gone, so I guess I'd like the council to accept his, the resignation of Bryce Christensen.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Bryce Christensen.
Any other comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, say no. Approved?
Thank you. Okay, so thanks for getting the Simble Valley Mutual Aid thing on the agenda, they just sent it to me. So we're part, as I mentioned in the notes, we're part of multiple mutual aid organizations, which is a good thing, you know, both, for all of us. So we're part of a Wabash County Mutual Aid, and we did that mainly because we're so close to Mazepa and Sembro Falls and Elgin, you know, so we don't usually get called to anybody else, but, you know, we've, we've done calls both ways. We're, we're part of the Simble Valley Mutual Aid, which goes, you know, Pine Island all the way, you know, to Hayfield, down to Stewartville, comes across, you know, it's got Dodge Center and Byron, so we've been part of that one for a long time, and then we're also part of Olmsted County. So each organization has, you know, some paperwork, most of the time, we don't have to really put the paperwork, but Simble Valley wanted that they updated their agreement because it didn't have costs in there, and I guess, you know, we've had, unfortunately, we know about FEMA and getting reimbursement and having documentation, and so if we did call other fire departments, you have to have a fee schedule that then the other departments could, you know, give a bill, they would get paid, and then that could be reimbursed through FEMA. So that's really the only change to the mutual aid, or the document, is there's some prices now for manpower, for trucks, for everything, so again, knock on wood, we don't need it, but it was, I think it's a good change, you know, to have in there, you know, if, again, for a large incident, most incidents are not large. So I guess, I just ask that you guys, you know, sign it, give me one copy, you keep a copy, and then I'll scan it, and I'll send it to the rest of them, and then we'll get the other ones back, so I'll give you all the other departments.
Who's supposed to sign it, Jerrilyn and I, or you?
I can't remember who it was, I think it was Mayor and.
Yeah, me and, yep.
Pretty obvious right there, sign.
Motion it or not?
Yeah, so I'd like a motion to have you guys, you know, approve it and sign it, again, it's a fairly change to it.
Make a motion to approve the Simble Valley Mutual Aid Association Mutual Aid Agreement. Any other comments? Looks like a good deal, I hope it's aimless too. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, say no. That's approved.
Yes, it's, most times we do mutual aid, we don't bill each other, we just, we help each other, but the long ones, that's good. Okay, first responders, Chris wasn't sure why the minute the runs, but we had fourteen runs, seven in city, seven township, so kind of split, split. And then I just wanted to add that we do have two people that are going twice a week to Elgin for first responder training. So, so that's good, so the last two people that we brought on were able to get in the class, so that's good. It's busy until they get through the class, they can't touch patients, so we need, we need people touching patients. And I talked to Pat, nothing you'll see, the, they had some, you know, new person, and that person is very quiet, doesn't really share much, so I guess that's a good thing that, you know, no bad weather, nothing going on, so we don't need it. Yep.
Good news.
Yep, thank you.
Next time, our agenda is personnel, and we have a couple reviews, and I will start out by reading some of the scripture. The agenda item for this meeting is the individual evaluation of the performance of city employee Jerrilyn Horton-Richter, our clerk treasurer pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section thirteen D point oh five subdivision three A. The closed portion of our monthly agenda will be closed because the city council will be evaluating and commenting on the performance of two separate individuals subject to the city's authority. Jerrilyn Horton-Richter has received notice, this meeting, Minnesota Statute Section thirteen D point oh five subdivision three A provides that any portion of a meeting may be closed for this reason unless the individual who is subject to the meeting requests that it be open. In this case, the individual does not make such a request that the meeting be open. Only the officials and consultants of the city who originally require access to the data may be in attendance at any portion of the closed meeting for this agenda item. So I now entertain a motion to close the portion of this meeting. Second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, say no. This time, we ask the public to leave.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Ask the people on Zoom meeting to.
Yeah, everybody has to step out.
We're having a personnel review, so we have to.
We should turn the air back on, we turned it off. Because we wouldn't hear, because it's so loud.
It is loud, I know.
It is really, yeah, I know.
And then we were, are you back up on this one now?
Yeah.
Okay, it's, we now open the council meeting to an open session, so is there a motion to open the meeting?
Vote to open the meeting.
Second.
Yeah? All the favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved? Now we are at introduction of beginning of a closed session, or another staff review. Agenda item for the meeting is an individual evaluation of the performance of Jim, city employee Jim Ackman, our water operator, groundskeeper pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section thirteen D oh five subdivision three A. The closed portion of our monthly agenda will be closed because the city council will be evaluating and commenting on the performance of two separate individuals. This one is Jim, has received notice of this meeting. For Minnesota Statute Section thirteen E point oh five subdivision three provides that any portion of a meeting may be closed for this reason unless the individual who is subject of the meeting requests that it be open. In this case, individuals do not make such requests that the meeting be open, did not make. Only the officials and consultants of the city who recently require access to this data may be in attendance at any portion of the closed meeting for this agenda item. I will now entertain a motion to close this portion, portion of the meeting. A motion to close, second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So ask the public to leave the meeting one more time. Meeting is now open, it's eight twenty-five PM, and I entertain a motion to open the council meeting.
I yield to open.
Second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So it's kind of just a summary of our evaluations of the two employees. Spent time going through constructive, constructive comments, and also the idea of sharing a person's goals and how to achieving those, at the same time, constructive comments about the past and how we can go forward as well, so. I mean, we're very well, the evaluations were very well received by both employees. So with that, I would make a motion that we proceed to effective one January twenty twenty-two that we provide a three percent increase to both Jerrilyn Richter, Horton, Horton Richter, and three percent to Jim Ackman as well.
A second?
Second? Sir, comments?
I would comment that both Jerrilyn and Jim have done a great job over the last year. There's been a lot of kind of craziness within the city, and they both jumped in to help out and take, take an ownership and definitely have a lot of pride in their work. You can see it in the just culture of the city when you walk into these buildings, you're very friendly, you're welcoming. The, the public knows who you are, and they, they appreciate you and family, and so as as part of that, you know, the compensation of a three percent increase, I feel is appropriate for women.
I think there's a, there's quite a future for the city, for sewer project coming up, and I think the employees will help make that even a better project going forward for the citizens as well. Any other comments? Hang on, all those in favor of the motion for the three percent increase, one January twenty twenty-two? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. O, say no. That's approved. Right. Next item is a ordinance, it's a resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixteen, which is the S D Ventures Aggregate Service. Came out of P N Z at our last committee meeting and resolution is for approving or denying the request for variance to allow the park not to be constructed with aggregate surfaces instead of pavement. Two parcels on Minnesota Avenue. Would anybody from the committee want to comment on that?
Sure. We received, yeah, we received this request to grant variance to allow a non-paved surface. And then the committee reviewed the resolution against the six criteria that we had outlined and we did not find that the request align, you know, aligned with any of those, the six criteria. So where that noted out was our suggestion and our, to the council that we do not grant this variance because it does not meet these six criteria. And then we also recommended that we could consider a phased approach requiring the paving moved forward in stages by the end of two years or sooner based on occupancy to allow the landowner or the applicant the ability to pave the lot in stages from a financial perspective to just give them that flexibility as they ramp their business up.
I have a question about businesses that are close to theirs, so Thompson's garage and then the storage facility behind them. So currently those are all still gravel. What is the timeframe in which they are to pave?
Good question, okay. In the case of ornamental self-storage behind them, there's an agreement with the owner and Joe, you can chime in too, but basically he's going to pave, he's finishing up two buildings. There's a third building, I think, his paving is going to be, so he's going to pave in between those buildings and then the driveway out to Minnesota Avenue. That's all part of his proposed agreement to.
So as soon as those two buildings are done, we would expect that to be.
He was supposed to start paving right away. It's all part of the package, so. In the case of Thompson, Thompson Garage Stores, we gave him a ultimatum of end of July this year. And so that's, it's clear that they're not going to meet that, we've sent them a letter. Renee's had some conversation back and forth and we got to looking at the timeframe of when they applied for their building permit and when the new resolution and new codes for the O A C C, Ornamental Architectural Control changes. When that was, came in that the M one had to be paved. And it's like within weeks of each other, of one being approved.
What came first?
Sorry.
What came first?
The permit came at first, like June, June nineteenth is when the O A C C guidelines and the drawings, the permit came in on the twenty-sixth of June or something like that, it was in a few weeks. So at that time, they were using the old not approved or the old, the old codes and there's no reference to that.
They were looking at the old one, but the new one had been approved by the time they applied their permit or their permits granted.
It was within, well, between the nineteenth and the twenty-sixth.
Which was.
It's about a week or ten days difference.
So what I'm asking is, had they applied for the permit with the old, looking at the old records? And then it was granted under the new, or not the new ordinance or new resolution rules? Is that all of this, you know?
I know, I know the permit, the ordinance was there before.
It was, okay.
No, that's what I'm doing. I throw a date around it, but the ordinance were there before. It's just that the permit came a week to ten days afterwards.
So.
So are you talking about the ordinance to rezone the S D parcel?
No, I just wanted these, I want to know what the requirements are of the surrounding buildings, because none of them are ground or paved at this point.
So one, one thing with this, this is not on the agenda tonight, but just pointed out quickly. So you rezone this, these two parcels. So now the owner apparently has indicated he's not going to pursue the project. So it's now rezoned, so now it's a different zoning designation.
Still.
No, it was.
Still M one. But it was B two.
Yeah, it was B two, you switch it to M one now for the purpose of having him do this project. He, he applied for rezoning, you rezoned it to M ones that he can do this project. Now he's indicating he's not going to do the project, so you, you might want to consider rezoning it back to B two. If you don't do that, you know, any other M one business could, could move in there.
But we didn't, we reset, we did the rezoning with the understanding that it has to be this business.
Right, but it's not, that's not the way the ordinance is written. I mean, it wasn't a conditional rezoning?
Yeah, it was.
It was, it was a conditional rezoning, that's what we had this discussion.
I'll look at it, I, I, when this, I talked to Mayor about this topic. I went back and looked at it and I don't think, I don't think the conditions in the ordinance, that the rezoning ordinance were sufficient.
Well, when we talked about it as a council, I know I was the one holding back on the whole thing and we said I would do it, I would vote for it if it was conditional and I
I remember.
I, it, it better be written.
So what I'll do is I'll look at it, we don't have to discuss it now, but.
But regardless of that, the, the, the thing on the table is if, if we, the item on the table is if we want to approve or deny.
So we just.
So I, I would like to vote to deny the request.
A second.
Any comments? So I did have a conversation with, with the owner today and he's, I asked him to send an email to Renee or City Hall chairman to explain to him that he should just say he's stopping the project so he can, we have some documentation so we can reimburse him for the security agreement that we didn't use. He put in a four thousand dollar security agreement and we used about twelve hundred dollars there or so. Or injuring fees that Joe did to respond to the agreement. So we'll reimburse him whatever we didn't use to pay standard. His vision of, of going forward was that it was not phasing, was not financially feasible for him. Cause he wanted, the phasing was to, to pave and if he puts people on it now at gravel, he won't anyway. So there's an expensive moving, once people's expensive to pave is one thing. Second is that if he did go into a base process and you end up having to move people's stuff out of this way, you couldn't pave it and that could be an economic or loss of a customer or just a hassle, so. His approach, and that's why it's the properties for sale, came up for sale the day after the P and Z meeting. And so he's choosing not to pursue the storage facility.
And so, I know we have the motion on the table, so with, with that being said, if this project falls through, will you look at?
I'm going to double check, I double checked it when this came up and I, I did not think the language was sufficient to automatically refer back to the prior zoning, which you can fix at the next meeting by just rezoning it, it's a one page. Yeah, track that one, but I, I will look at it, email everybody, just to make sure, one way or another, either it's automatically rezoned back or that we draft an ordinance to rezone it back and you can consider that at the August meeting.
Resone, I'm wanting, I'm wanting to be to an August meeting. I won't be here.
Okay. Any other comments? If all those in favor of denying the variance, signify by saying aye. Apply voice vote. Signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
So Mayor, you'll have to, when you sign that up and serve the applicant with that, just make sure Geraldine email it to him and ask him to reply or verify that he receives it. Sorry.
Yes. Yep, sorry, yep.
Right. Public works. It's a quote. Replace a, our existing boiler here in City Hall, or two new boilers, for fourteen thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars. Make a motion to approve the boilers from reliable heating and cooling, for fourteen thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars. Was the timeframe, money was going to do that or?
We're getting done this year before heating season.
Before heating season, okay.
Yeah.
Any other comments for the council? How long will it take, a couple days?
Uh, within a week, week's time, yeah.
This will be paid out of community center repaired maintenance. And I've got the number here. All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O. Approved. Drawdown level and flow meters proposal from, there's an email in your packet, Kane. In controls already has a quote, is in the packet.
Yeah, the last page, you can see a short email, In Controls bid, Time Well's bid, and then our electrician, Scott Benner, he hasn't gotten back to me on an exact number, but I'm thinking the twenty thousand dollar amount would cover the whole project.
So these are not are those individual folks or it all makes up the package?
That makes the package deal, yep. Yeah, we got to have an electrician, we got to have Time Well, and of course we're married to In Control, our controls people for our well system, so it's a package deal.
Make a motion that we approve up to twenty thousand dollars to include for a well one and two, draw down levels and flow meters.
Second.
I think we touched briefly on this, but In Controls brought it to our attention that we could use a very good rescue plan and funding to cover the cost of this. The city will be adding about a hundred
fifty?
Fifty thousand, hundred sixty thousand dollars to payments. Half of that in July, probably sometime, and the other half has to be spent by twenty, December twenty twenty-four. So we'll be getting about seventy-five thousand, so we can use part of that towards that. In the August or September meeting, we'll have, we're learning more about how funds are being used and there's some webinars out on L M C to help us identify how people are using. No other comments, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. O. Approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Kane.
Thanks, Kane, I want to say thanks too for coming to Parks meetings. I just found out, I didn't realize it was like voluntary, so I appreciate it. It's voluntary for Jim, or voluntary for Jim, sorry. Thanks for coming to Parks meetings, anyway. It's like, okay.
Yeah, you're welcome.
You're like, yeah, I gotta be there.
Streets and roads. Joe, you want to just go down the line real quick?
Yeah. Seal coat was completed yesterday, so the contractor will be back on Friday to do a sweeping, so they'll sweep up excess rock. Then in another thirty to forty-five days, they'll come back and sweep a second time. Crack filling has been done, the only thing that would remain after the seal coat would be the striping and I don't have a schedule for that from the contractor at this point, but I'd expect it to probably be in August or September. Downtown retaining wall, obviously many of you probably noticed they started excavation on that. Today they exposed the water service to one of the property owners along the the wall. Tomorrow morning they'll be shutting down water and lowering that water service to facilitate construction of the wall. And things will proceed fairly quickly after that, so one thing to think about, we're going to have to select a color for that wall, that wall gets stained once it's installed. So.
Do you have options?
We do have options. Does the council have a the contractor kind of proposed to just do some test staining of a block, a couple blocks on the wall, but he needs to kind of say, you know, it's got to be a tan or it's got to be a brown or it's going to be a gray or it's got, you know, if you, if you can give him kind of a, somewhere in this color palette, then that would help.
Is there anything in the planning and zoning? Dutification?
The guidelines?
The guidelines, yeah, the guidelines. I mean, I like gray.
I'm sure tan and gray are both doable. That's pretty common.
I like a limestone color myself.
I like, I, I like limestone as well, that more tan, I think it kind of goes because we are river community, the line, it's all down by the river.
A limestone would be nice.
Yeah, that would kind of flow up, you know what I mean, it would flow nice.
That, that might make some sense, you know, you get the rocks down in the rapids and the rock wall on the south bank there and maybe that would all tie together, I, I don't know.
They did deliver, some of the blocks are from our deeds property across the V F W, so.
So do you want him to maybe spot up a couple of different tans and you'll pick something? You want to all approve it at a meeting, which wouldn't be ideal, or do you?
Thank you for my opinion, because I won't get here in the daylight.
Ideally, we just have a few people that would be able to come and not the whole council to give the color in.
Whatever you guys, whoever wants to be the decision maker, do it, I'm good with whatever. I'm sure it's going to be beautiful.
Kane.
Kane's like, why?
Kane can do it.
I can do it.
You know, we're, you know, we're looking for limestone.
Natural limestone.
You got good taste.
For sure. For sure, right?
Okay, sounds good.
Um, my question, Joe, about the Pearson, I did get some information from owner, homeowners that live in the township that have, were worried about the depositing and dumping of rock and debris, so I just want to make sure that that was discussed with our, I mean, it's already done, but that we, they.
Dumping debris.
Dumping debris, that's happened in the past apparently with Pearson Company, Pearson Brothers. And when they sweep it, they have, and they actually have asked township residents permission to dump in their fields. And I want to make sure that that doesn't happen again.
Talk to them.
And take it with you.
But they're required to take it with you, I think they're just looking for a disposal site, yes.
Correct, but I don't think we should ask our township residents to be that disposal site, so.
Yeah, it's the contractor that's making that request, not the city.
Right, but when we enter into contract with them, I feel like we can request that they not.
Well, it's in the contract, the contract says they, they're required to dispose of the material at licensed facilities, so.
Okay, so then if.
Whatever they choose.
Comes and says this happened, then we can address it because it is in the contract that says that.
Right.
That's just, I want to, I want to make sure that there is something, okay, thank you.
Good. Speed table update. So there's Kane talked to S L, Rochester Services. I know we had the one estimate from Joe for a speed table cost. Kane reached out to Rochester Services to see what they've done in the past. And if they, if they put the ones by Gage, they've been replaced with concrete. Correct. So the three, there's three of my gauge school on Fortieth Street Northwest in front of Gage School. They're city width and they're about twenty-two feet long, essentially two, two concrete slabs or maybe four inch, I'm guessing a four inch rise in the middle. And they're out of concrete. Unless you've heard anything else, that's what I've seen, or I took pictures of it. Unless you've heard anything else, that's what I've seen, or I took pictures of it.
Talking with Joe tonight, and I think Joe's got some very good points. Maybe he can lead into those as far as signage and liability, if somebody hits that and wrecks their car, or runs off the road, or whatever. I think there's more to it than just a speed bump or a speed table, so.
Could be one of my questions too. I reached out to Minbat and got in contact with one of theirs. I'd have to look up his title, Safety People. And then he gave me some resources that suggested there's like seventeen or so different traffic calming measures in addition to speed limit lowering, which he'd said, much to the point, um, that we'd seen maybe lowering the speed limit doesn't work. And so knowing that there's, uh, maybe seventeen potential options, which I'm sure aren't all options, given the state of the road. You know, looking at collecting some data to figure out which option might be best would probably be helpful. So I think that that speed limit sign will be useful to collect, or for, for us, what are the, what do we call that?
The radar?
Yeah, and so to actually track the data, so we can figure out what's going on there.
Right. They started collecting data earlier this week, or last week, last week. So, uh, you know, it's radar, so it's collecting. Crest the hill.
Yeah.
Before the silver thing, so they'll stay there for five to ten days, and they may move or take a look at the data.
Okay.
That's the plan right now. For right now, it's not showing a sign, it's not showing their upper miles per hour. But they can uncover it later on, and then people can see when they're actually traveling. The second phase of where it's at. I think that's, so I think it's the data that we really need to make some good decisions.
I, I think, I'm, it's, I, so I've been researching this too, and I'm finding the speed limit isn't like your Minbat, right on their things, right on their website, it just doesn't decrease speeding. But my, my biggest issue is that, I think it's two separate issues, because West Center Street is a very differently populated street than Sumro Hills Drive. Sumro Hills Drive is so packed with houses, houses, homes. When you drive that, driving thirty miles an hour on that street is dangerous. Like, it's just dangerous to drive thirty miles an hour on that street. I can't, I had a hard time doing it.
Sumro Hills Drive.
Sumro Hills Drive. Um, I think that, yeah, I'd be really interested, Lizzie, in what those other measures are. Because from what it sounded like, it's like changing the actual road surface is the biggest determinant to speeding. So what are the other options?
Some of them were, and you might know more about this than I do, but some of them were things like adding like a median barrier, or, um, if you've seen, you know, like, so that there's, so that's one. There is another that I looked at where it's, um, like, uh, street corners are added, and they're almost, they almost like intrude into the road a little bit before they retreat. So that's, and I can share the information that I got with the rest of the council. Cause I just received it a day or two ago and had time to review it. But that's, again, so with all of those different options, obviously, some of them would be things that we might be able to pursue. Others, we might not, based on the road itself and where it is and whatever's around it. So data will be helpful.
Yeah, so some of the things that we use for traffic calming, lane width, you know, narrow, lane width, narrowing the road up, plantings along the road, making the corridor feel narrower. There's things like bump outs, but they're really for urban areas, um, you know, medians.
Is that that big bump out in Pine Island?
Yeah, you see, you see bump outs in lots of places, downtown areas.
Gage School too.
Yeah, you see them periodically, um, you know, medians obviously, uh, kind of narrow up that road width and, 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 uh, can be used to decrease speeds, but in our setting in these rural areas, it's very different and challenging. And, uh, you know, the, the speed tables or the speed bumps, you know, I think present their own problems, especially in areas where you wouldn't necessarily anticipate they would be, um, you know, they are an obstacle that can cause accidents and can damage property, and, you know, if the council really wants to put those in, you need to be very careful how you kind of, mitigate that risk and, and warn the traveling public that these facilities are there, and, you know, that they need to take care, and they also create some maintenance issues and, um, you know, they're, they're challenging, I'd say. And, and I've seen people put them in, and I've seen liability increases as a, as a function of that. Gets complaints and property damage, and things happen that aren't, aren't necessarily intended.
Do you think that the risk is higher for the liability on something like the speed table versus if someone is speeding? I mean, is it like the lesser of two evils? Like, we're putting these in to stop people from speeding, and now you're speeding and you hit the speed bump too hard and you wrecked your car?
Yeah, I agree.
Like, too bad, so sad. I don't know, like, what are you doing?
To me, we're talking about a, like, a child or pet, or an adult's life versus your bumper.
Versus, versus your. And, and if you have the speed tables with appropriate signage around them, then does that mitigate that liability?
I, I think it can't hurt, but, you know, I, I think that they're also in a rural section, places that some drivers might not expect them to be. And so it's one thing if you're familiar with the area, and it's another if you're driving a delivery truck and you've never been through that corridor before.
Well, that's another thing, delivery trucks. That's fine, they go over a few speed bumps and wreck their truck, because they drive way too fast in our developments. It's so dangerous. Anyway, that's a whole other thing, but the, the problem with, again, I will just go back to saying that West Center Street and Sumro Hills Drive are very different as far as how populated. So I can see what you're saying about West Center Street, maybe speed bumps wouldn't be the best approach on that side? And am I, am I thinking of this wrong? Because there's less, it's less densely populated, right? Like, there's not quite as many homes as say that beginning of Sumro Hills Drive where people are seeming to have the biggest.
There's more people in West Center Street, there's more properties on the north side of the street at least. There's just, it's repeated, you look up your own map.
Yeah.
But, um, I think this is a good discussion, I think that, and, you know, we, we talked about minimum extra enforcement for the four hours in, in my conversation, just to add, this is another option. My conversation with Sergeant Chambers is the four hours tends to be lumped together at one time versus two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon. So, you know, a thousand dollars a week is gonna add up real fast, and it's a short term. Yeah, we could try it for a week or two weeks and rub two thousand dollars, and we may get some speeders. The data is gonna tell us something, whether we should consider that, so it's a, it's a short term fix, it's awareness that the sheriff's out there. But when he's gone, in my mind, speed tables are gonna help us maintain that, and form your uniformity of people. What the shape it looks like, that's another story, but I don't think reducing the speed limit is, that's, 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 there's still gonna be speeders. But I guess I'd like to continue the conversation. Hopefully, in April, we'll have a report on the speed data. And if you want to share your options with Joe and all of us, just to kind of keep that in mind. Ultimately, I think we need to do something, because speeding has always been a problem. And if it's something that can be adapted fairly inexpensively and effective, we could be using it on other streets too.
So I would like to just ask, like, so we got this estimate from Kane, but then they had also gotten one from Santa a long time, or well, a long time ago. So what's the, why the big difference, and what's the?
Seven year old.
Yeah, so that would be one you'd see like in front of like Target or Best Buy, like just a, a four foot roller. So it's very minimal, not much for installation, not much for material.
One in ours.
It potentially could get scraped up by the stone plows, you know, it's.
What, what, did you say hard on cars? Well, no, well, so you're talking about the little bump or the table?
It's just, it's, it's larger than you think, it's, it's about four foot.
Yeah, so like on the, the street that I'm thinking of, uh, fifty-fifth street, and then, um, you go back, it's that, we call it the secret backwaiter, or like my old development where I used to live in Rochester, but they had to put those table, they put tables just like that there.
Yep. They're, they're larger than you think.
They are.
And if they are made out of concrete, it's, Joe can tell you the price of concrete is high.
Right.
But what you're talking about is not that.
Correct.
Well, you're talking, no, you're talking about that, but not concrete. No.
The seven hundred dollar quote would just be blacktop, and it would just be four foot wide by the width of the road. So very minimal material, very minimal labor, and more so temporary, so it could get scraped up by the, by the stone plow.
And it could be something that we could do sooner than later.
Sure could.
Yeah, and it could be a, a way of temporarily fixing the problem, or at least letting the citizens know that we're listening, and could also help calm the neighborhood situation down.
My comment would be, if you know those that are Best Buy and, and Ashley Furniture Store, and, and, you know, people are going maximum thirty, maybe twenty or twenty-five through the parking lot. So you hit the bump, I mean, that's a substantial bump. But if you put something like that on West Center Road, when they're going down the road at thirty plus, it's gonna be a jarring, it will get complaints. Now, they, you could say, well, yeah, you're right.
But can we think?
But it's also a liability.
Table ahead, I mean, can we get?
Yeah, we can get signage, we can get signage. You're looking at about a hundred bucks a sign, so you need a sign at the bump both ways. You need a sign, a bump ahead sign, so you're looking at a couple hundred bucks in signs per, per bump, or per table, whatever you want to call it, so. It's something, I know what you're saying, Laurie, it's something you can do to ease the residents. I know what Lizzie's talking about too, the bump outs and the medians, and there's ways to definitely do it, but, you know, there's stone plows up here that they do, makes it more difficult for, for maintaining the. Right.
Well, and those streets are already narrow. Well, Sumro is very narrow, and that's the issue, you know, with cars parked, people walking, cars driving fast, that's why it is so dangerous, because.
I think it's a good discussion. I don't think, well, I'd like to see the data, because the data will help us explain to the citizens how fast people are going or aren't going. We may find out it's all going forty-five, I don't think they are. It's that perception of speed, and they may be going thirty, or they may be going thirty-five, thirty-seven. We did the same thing on Minnesota Avenue, we got speeders, we got speeders. We did the data, and maybe there's one or two cars that's over forty, they were on that thirty to thirty-five, yes, they were speeding, but it wasn't this perceived fifty miles an hour.
Well, then, if we're going with perceived, and if we don't think people are going over thirty, then I would go back to proposing twenty-five.
That might be the answer, I don't know.
I don't think that's slow down, though.
But then, at least, yeah, I don't know, I, I just, I really want, I'm nervous, somebody's going to get hurt. I'm really nervous, either with volatile situation upon West Center Street that somebody's going to get hurt, or a child is going to be hurt on Sumro Hills Drive.
My other point, I know you want to move on, but by waiting until the data comes in, we're looking at August for our next meeting. And then we're looking at nothing to happen until September, October, I mean, I, I feel like the, the slowness of the council's decision based on waiting for the, we, we know something's going on. We know that there's an issue. I, I don't, I mean, I kind of am a little nervous about waiting too long to make a decision on what we need to do.
Joe, so you're signed to the eighteen thousand, twenty-one thousand? That was, that was a.
The concrete speed tables, thirty feet long, uh, is, is a little bit different facility than what, what you're talking about. But obviously, it's significantly more expensive, so, you know, maybe, maybe you want to go a different route, I, I don't know. You asked me for a cost, and when I do something that's sustainable.
Possibly. The other option is to, when the data is available, we have a special meeting, just on that agenda item, and go and, and make, uh, come out of that meeting with an action plan.
I would just like to say, if I find out that nobody's speeding, that we don't collect any data saying somebody's, like, we didn't collect any solid data on it, I'd still want to have speed tables. That's just how I am a witness. It doesn't matter to me. Cause I have received so many personal phone calls, I have had people personally come and talk to me about, and I'm talking specifically, specifically about Sumro Hills Drive. But now, also with West Center Street, I just, I think no matter what the data shows, I'm gonna still feel the same way. So I, I guess I am with Laurie in this, not understanding why, why would we wait? If we're going to make the same decision. If I'm going to feel the same way, maybe not everybody does, but.
Well, and I think that's my point of just continuing the conversation now. I feel like if we have a temporary solution that's, that we can do, um, I don't know where they would go, and maybe you have really great ideas, you do have great ideas of where to put them, that, um, you know, if we, if we could vote on that tonight, then we could at least have a, a temporary solution, even if it's not a permanent solution. But it's showing the public that we are listening, we are ready to make a decision, and even, even if the data comes back and says you're all driving thirty, that's good, you, you still need to slow down.
Do you see anything from a liability standpoint, your experience on speed bumps?
Wasn't prepared to answer it. I mean, I think you could contact your L M C I T insurance representative to ask about what they recommend, sometimes they have recommendations. For example, when, um, you build a high retaining wall, sometimes they have best practices to put signs up to stay off the wall to mitigate liability. So there might be, you know, I would, I don't want to check with them, but, you know.
But the city's in a position here, there are some lawsuits.
Yeah, I mean, you can have a claim against the city if somebody damages their car, yeah, whether that'll be sustained or not, I'm not prepared to say tonight, but.
Could we have a claim against the city if we do nothing and we know that this is going on?
I'm saying in public, but it's possible, it's possible.
I, I mean, let's be real, we need to, we need to take action. How many do we need? How many could we get away with?
Well, Sumro Hills Drive, Riverwood Drive, West Center, uh, Second Avenue, behind the lumberyard. There's a couple that stick out where we have traffic issues and complaints and.
So Second Avenue?
Behind the lumberyard.
I would propose, I, I would propose that we concentrate on the higher population areas at this point.
Well, like River Park, Fifth and Sixth Street, there's a lot of complaints there about people speeding.
Well, in River Park, we don't have speed limit signs, so.
Right, and neither does Downtown.
So.
But what about for this, this neighborhood issue, this Riverwood Hills Drive and?
So.
So you were saying Riverwood, so Riverwood, Riverwood Drive and Sumro Hills? And that's, I mean, that's all the same path, and that's the, that's the, where I first got contacted, and that's where, that's where it's, especially down on Sumro Hills, that's where it's really densely populated, and then there's the hill, and it's kind of just scary to parents with children. And that's where I drove and thought, this will be, I could never drive thirty miles an hour here, but people do. Um, and then Riverwood Drive, same thing, it's a hill. It's obviously been a problem before because you have the flags up.
Yep. And then West Center.
Center and, West Center, Second Avenue, they'll all be torn up here for an hour or less because of the sewer project.
West Center will be completely torn up.
Through the middle.
Yep.
So will, so will Second Avenue. So, so will Second Avenue. So there's that issue.
Riverwood Hills.
Oh, temporary, so it's gonna be torn up.
Riverwood Hills and Riverwood, Riverwood Drive and and Zumbrow Hills wouldn't be?
Can you tell me more about the extra enforcement, minimum of four hours at sixty-five dollars an hour? What is that?
So they, uh, Sergeant Chambers contacted the Training Department, and the Training Department, that's part of their training, is they can get training students out there to do the enforcement, and sixty-five dollars, it's two hundred and sixty dollars, two hundred and forty dollars a day for our shift, it's daytime shift.
What's daytime?
And it's, uh, well, that's, that's part of the issue, is that we're, we're still up against shift times, and so, you know, what you heard from the gentleman here is those are the high, high speed times, and those people are out there because they're changing shifts. Throughout the county.
Thanks. And it's a West Center Street next year, we're talking like, early, as soon as we can in twenty twenty-two, that road will be torn up.
Reconstructed with the least water, water improvements.
So the contractor really has twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three to complete the improvements, so we don't know for sure, but I would say it's likely. That'll happen in twenty twenty-two.
Well, as long.
I don't think there's any question we're gonna do, have to do something, it's just kind of retiring.
I guess, I guess I would like to make motion, I would like to make motions to to the speed tables, a keen post on Zumbrow Hills Drive and Riverwood Drive Southwest with the signage that you proposed. How many did you, were you thinking over there? I mean, is it usually like a couple?
That's, that's the problem, because you're gonna hit one bump, and then you're gonna speed up thirty miles an hour, and then you're gonna hit a stop sign, so. You know, you, you place one here, I think you could, a week later, you could probably place one halfway down the road again, I, I think.
Well, I think, like, the ones that I'm familiar with, is there's two, because that, it does exactly that, it keeps you from like, uh-uh, you know what I mean, it just kind of keeps you at a nice slow pace. Um, instead of what you were just saying, um, so I guess I would propose two on each street. And then you, the signage would be in front of the first one. Speed tables, you could probably save speed tables ahead, instead of just, I mean, that's what I'm sure I've seen.
You can say bump. I've seen bump.
They say bump. I would be aggressive with my signing, both morning and then at the location, so four signs, minimum of four signs for each one per bump, yeah, and I guess I would research a little bit. Think you wanna very carefully warn the public that those are in place and that they're potentially a hazard.
Then contact the L M C I T if they have guidance. I would, yeah, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. Sheriff should help us identify.
This is not, we are not reinventing the wheel here, this is done all the time, in every city. I'm sure we can, I'm sure.
I would like to second the proposal for, for speed bumps two per, two per road. Minimum of four signs, as, I guess, as needed.
I have a motion for four speed bumps, two on Zumbrow Hills Drive, two on Riverwood Drive, and four signs at each. Four signs at each of the, uh, so it's.
Two signs at each speed bump.
Sixteen signs total.
Four at each speed bump.
So I'm guessing that's gonna be three hundred dollars, another sixteen hundred dollars, so it's forty-four hundred dollars.
Speed bump and one, two after.
If you have more of a hill.
Yeah, so sixteen signs, would you say?
Yep. Let's say forty-four hundred dollars or up to five thousand dollars, whatever. I make a motion, you amend, or amend the motions to say up to five thousand dollars.
I'll make a friendly amendment to include the price range up to five thousand dollars.
Those in favor, the comments, all those in favor?
I have a comment. I'm still concerned that we don't have information about where the speeding actually is happening, which means we don't know what the right mitigation method would be. Um, so we don't know what the right solution is actually going to be, we're lacking expert input necessarily. You know, because we haven't given a heads up to people who would otherwise need to be prepared. And so the cost to doing all of this, um, which seems like a quick fix, is gonna be pretty significant um, compared to, you know, a fully thought-out approach and a purposeful approach. And so it's, I, that is very concerning.
And I appreciate that, that, that lens, I really do, it's, it's really good.
And I mean, I don't, and I understand that people are concerned, and I, and I've seen that too, and it is painful when your community and your neighborhood is not working the way it is. But I just don't wanna do a quick fix for, you know, we need, they also deserve more than a quick fix. And this is a quick fix.
It is a quick fix, but at the same time, it's an effective fix. Even if they are doing thirty miles an hour, or they're not going over thirty miles an hour. I would guess that there are times when people wanna go over thirty miles an hour. So I think that's where twelve hundred dollars on a speed bump, if you will, to protect the citizens, because there is no, there are no sidewalks anywhere, so there are people walking on the streets, and we need to do something to curb the speeding. I mean, it's, it's so easy to curb, it's so easy to speed, it's hard to keep it at thirty.
When you get further up, when you get further up, yeah. I would say.
It demonstrates to those residents that we are responding.
I would say too, my, my thought is, um, speed studies are accurate. When you know there's a sign there gathering, gathering your speed, you're going to slow down. You know, we, I, I just don't think we get the most accurate, I, I kind of, I'm taking this from the residents who live there, I trust them. I trust what they're saying, I trust what they're experiencing. I've actually asked the residents that live at the upper part of Zumbrow Hills Drive and Riverwood, you know, all that area. And, um, even though it would slow down, slow them down coming to and home from work, they are all for it. Um, because, and they also are all for the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. That is a longer process, that is something that we have, it's trickier, and according to studies, doesn't work.
Well, adding additional patrol would, would also do the same thing, and it would give us a sense of where speeding is occurring.
But they're not able to be here at the time it's happening, they he invented it tonight. Even if we added extra people, it would not change their shift time.
Yeah, we still don't have any information or any data about what's actually happening and when.
So the other thing we have, hopefully will happen, is that we have two speed radar speed signs, solar powered uh, for the grant that we applied for from State Farm, and that'll be city property. And so we can continue to monitor the speeds, awareness for, to our residents, wherever we wanna put them, we don't have to rely on the county's. So I think that's gonna, a combination of speed bumps and just the awareness is, is a positive move for the city that, uh, every city has speeding problems. I saw a sign in Rochester I've never saw before, it said, speed limit in Rochester is twenty-five miles an hour or less, post thirty. I don't know if that's a new sign or whatever it was, it's on Hill Hills Drive.
I do feel like that could be new, I feel like somebody just told me that.
The, the other piece of that puzzle is, this is a community that's coming together to say we have a problem and people are speeding, but not one of them are part of the problem. So I, I think that's, that's also we're hearing from the people that are, are seeing it, um, that nobody's coming together to say, I wanna change, I wanna be the one that drives twenty-five, I wanna be the one that goes really slow. And, and their neighborhood's coming together, but they're, they're still struggling to get their neighbors to slow down, and now there's this Nike going on. So, it, that's why I understand missing, we're missing the, the speed data. But it's happening, I mean, regardless, like Dana said, regardless if they're actually owing thirty or thirty-five, the perception is their reality.
I think the other thing too, we can, so if we do this here, at least, you know, I, when I look at five thousand dollars, I think, yeah, that's a lot of money, but it's not compared to a lot of, some of life. Um, and I also think that we can try this on this hard town. If it's a success, we will know that going forward into what to do on West Center Street. When that project is done over there, we can once again address the more permanent, a more permanent solution, so if we have success with this, then we can address that on that side, and we will have kind of some whether it's hard data, or whether it's, uh, just based on people's experiences, we will have something to base our future decisions on. I just don't think we can keep doing that, because it's not, doing nothing is working.
I like, and I kinda go along with your comments, Joe, I'd like to think yes, optimistic viewpoint of my own, but the point is that if we do this on Zumbrow Hills and Riverwood Hills Drive, I think that demonstrates to the citizens, rest of the city, that we can do things, and we can make things happen. So, you know, lead by example, you guys don't slow down, this is gonna happen. Any other comments? It's a good discussion, all good points, and I think the bottom line is, we need, the city would need to respond to our residents. With that, all those in favor of the speed bumps on Zumbrow Hills and Riverwood Hills Drive up to five thousand dollars? Appropriate signs, or signs on each one? Seeing if I'm being saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Both say no? It's approved, excellent. We will, uh, hey, reach out to hey, Rochester Services. And also, we should reach out to Sergeant Chambers. You and I have a conversation with him about where we want these placed. We could identify this spot and send an email out to Council. For their awareness, so. Lord's Ur, yeah, Lord's Ur. We received some bids for restoration. Joe, if you wanna comment on the
little bit, yeah, so, last Thursday, we opened bids on the, uh, Zumbrow River Restoration flood repairs, and we received five bids. A little bid was from Dirk Prose LLC totaling three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars. This was well underneath the engineer's estimate of about five hundred and forty-five thousand. And well under the second bidder, uh, as well. I have not had the opportunity to work with Dr. Prose, mayor asked me to give a few folks a call, um, I did get references from them, I did call those references. And was able to speak with a county engineer and a couple cities, and those folks reported that, uh, although the contractor hasn't been in business a very long time, they were able to perform. I have asked Dirk Prose if they're comfortable with their bid, and they wanna move forward, and they indicated that they do, uh, they indicate that they feel comfortable with their bid and feel comfortable with the work, and and lovely plan to start in September. So, um, with that said, I guess, you know, if you want to award the contractor the low bidder, um, then you should award to Dirk Prose LLC for that bid amount. One thing to kind of note is that the project is being funded through FEMA, and there's a combination of a couple things going on, um, first, there are the flood, flood repairs, and then there are mitigation improvements to prevent future flooding and flood damage. And those mitigation improvements are, in this case, essentially planting trees and shrubs along the stream banks uh, to hold the soil and mitigate that future flooding. Well, um, with the project, FEMA allows up to fifteen percent of the project cost for the flood repairs to be used for mitigation purposes. Well, that's all fine when we're talking about a half million dollar project, but bids came in so low that now we might exceed that fifteen percent uh, for the trees, you know, so what I'm trying to say is, we, we're gonna have to work with FEMA, and we might have to reduce the number of trees that we actually ultimately plant out there to be within that fifteen percent, unless the city ultimately wants to pay for someone else. And so I have reached out to FEMA um, through the state and got a little bit of information on that, um, last Friday. There is additional information that I wanna get in that regard, so we can work through that. We have the ability to modify the, the quantities within the contract amount, it's a unit price quantity for a contract, so we can vary that, and obviously, it's the last thing to do, so, I guess, um, I just wanted to kind of alert the council to that issue. I'm assuming that you don't wanna incur additional expenses on this project that would be, wouldn't be borne by FEMA, but may, maybe that's not the case, it's something to think about. Um, because we'll, we'll probably talk about this again. But this is one of the issues that's created uh, by this bid scenario. Usually happy to see low bid, bid prices, not, not necessarily in this case. So, complication.
I make a motion to approve the low bid by Dirk Prose LLC for three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars.
I'll second that. So about the trees, Joe, just, I think that's, um, because the Parks Committee continues to work to plant more trees throughout the parks, so I think whatever shortcoming, if we do come up with a shortcoming, we can we can bring the Parks Committee, and they have sales on trees for the county and different depending on the size of the trees, of course, but I think we could maybe complement that with our Parks Committee, sure, budgeting too. Any other comments? When can they start?
Well, they can start as soon as we execute the contract and they return them all, and then we issue the notice proceed. Their expected start date is September, early September, but it'll take two, three weeks to have the contracts completed, executed, the bonds and insurance documents prepared and approved.
Fully aware of the deadline.
They are.
Any other comments? Any other comments? If not, all those in favor of awarding the contract to Dirk Prose? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh. Ornoco State Survey? You're ongoing? Trying to get their attention?
We are trying to get their attention. The Income Survey has been poorly returned. Not for lack of trying. We had a public open house event, which two people showed up to. You know, from the city's perspective, you know, there's a limited number of things that we can do. It's really, we need the assistance of Ornoco Estates. And they indicate that they're, they know it's important and then, and they'll do what they can to facilitate it, but they need to step up. It was originally requested that it be done by the end of I think the middle of July, July 15th, which has come and gone. I think we extended it a month to the middle of August.
Have we gone there?
Yes.
We've had an overdose there?
Yes. Two people came. There was high presenters.
Maybe, when, like, I don't know, did we go at when people would be working?
I think it was from five to seven in the evening.
So would this be something, is it, is it important enough for us to, for you to knock on doors?
Well, it really benefits Ornoco Estates. Not necessarily, you know, the Income Survey specifically targeting that group. Now where it can benefit the city is, you know, their participation in the project. I think it's a good thing and could be very significant for those users.
Could we give them a stamp?
Yes. And they're returning them all.
Right now, the plan is to personal visits? Unless I heard that was the plan.
Oh, that is the plan?
Ornoco Estates has said that they were going to do that on their property. I suppose we can do it if they wanted us to and you wanted us to do it, but they indicated that they want to do that, or they're willing to do that.
I feel like we have put a lot of effort into it. And at this point, it's been months of this. And I just, I feel like we need to just be done with it, honestly. We have put our best effort in. At what point do you say we tried? I mean.
Well, the ball's kind of in, from my perspective, in their court. And they need to perform.
That's kind of what I'm, where I'm going with it.
I don't know what else we can do.
The challenge we have is that just with the MPC or with the PFA and the funding and everything, because we are spending a good portion of the, a decent portion of the funding for the legislation, the line, and get that message across that the funding is there.
Is the survey company that we contracted with offer any sort of accessibility accommodations in terms of, you know, getting, like, helping people?
I don't think that they're meeting with people or anything like that. I think that, you know, if, if, if they want to contact SITA and have questions about what they're filling out and what they're supposed to do, I think there's contact information that's been provided, but they're not at this point going door to door, you know.
The messaging initially came out in, in the community to not fill this out. So we're now backtracking. You know, the, they were told, don't fill it out. Or they told each other, don't fill it out. And so now it's hard to change that mindset of, like, we're really trying to help you get money for yourselves to help you with this. How do we get the word out that this is a good thing for you? This doesn't help Ornoco fund something for Ornoco. This helps Ornoco Estates individually fund the project.
All right, so it's, SITA is very willing to help. Chris Johnson's the vice president, is more than willing to help. But we're just waiting for the Ornoco Estates manager to make that commitment to actually, well, yeah. All right. Anything else on the Ornoco Estates, otherwise we're just about our project update?
Project, project status, the project is up for bid. Just like we talked about last month, I am getting calls from various different contractors asking questions. There is a solicitation as part of the bid for telemetry and controls of equipment. People that do that type of work need to submit pre-qualifications. And then we'll go through those, pre-qualifications and approve people within the next couple of weeks. So that is one of the things that is kind of going on behind the scenes. Aside from that, the plans are being disseminated electronically. And again, we're getting calls, people that are interested in asking kind of basic questions about the project and trying to start to dig into that. So all that's good. In addition to that, we continue to work with the various agencies on various different permits, whether it be from MNDOT or DNR or Health Department or MPCA, lots of different moving parts, but that's all moving forward. So kind of positive movement from, from that, those perspectives. Item B, as we talked about in the special council meeting earlier this month, we did send out a letter to all of the folks receiving low pressure sewer systems that haven't completed their access and maintenance agreement. So that letter was mailed out on earlier this month. And there is a special open house beginning tomorrow evening from four to seven. And then there is a second and third session on July 22nd from nine to 12:00 a.m. and from four to seven p.m. And we'll have Linda Brown and myself and city staff available for folks to come in and ask questions and hopefully execute the agreements.
I'm just messaging her right now to do that. Texting her back, yep.
Joe, there's a Steve Norland, and I think probably tomorrow when the YouTube is loaded on, you go out and watch the public forum session right at the beginning. He had several comments you may want to just follow up on. All right. So they're hoping this is going to turn out. Linda said there's several people planning on being here at four o'clock tomorrow for easement, so that's great. Permanent temporary acquisition status. Now, anything else before we go into closed session? So this next item is so going forward, the agenda item, next item is, for this portion of the regular meeting is to develop or consider offers or counter offers for the purchase of real property easement located on Hope State County Parcel ID numbers and 841724058542 located in the city of Ornoco. The portion of this property, notice regular meeting, the city council, this city of Ornoco will be closed pursuant to Minnesota's statute 13D.05 subdivision 3C and section 13D.05 subdivision 3C2. I will now entertain a motion of a meeting. I make a motion to close?
Second.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will close at nine forty-three.
Thinking about it, thinking about it. It's short and sweet.
There's some going.
Yeah.
I end up
That's what we need.
Hello.
I end up.
Good evening.
Thanks for hanging in with us.
No problem. You guys have a lot.
Recording again.
Okay, we are back in open session. And I'll entertain a motion to open the session.
I move to open the session.
Lori. Second, Dana. At 10:01. The all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, say no, it's approved. Back in open session at 10:01. And I would make a motion that we accept or approve for parcel ID 841734052417. Compensation of $24,584.
Twenty-four thousand what? Eighty-five dollars?
Twenty-four thousand five eighty-four. And revise the easement language. And
And accept the revised.
Accept revised easement language.
Except revised easement language, yeah. And with parcel ID 841724058542 compensation for permanent temporary easements of $11,753.
Second.
Your second. Dana, Lori, Lori. Any comments or see none? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, say no. That's approved. Go to pet ordinance. There's a pet ordinance with revisions.
I move we table that till August and because of the time and because Jim is not here. And she has been working on this with us.
Can I second that one?
I'm with you.
I'll second it. And I do say it looks great, so.
Mike went to be your proxy there, okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye to bring back at the August meeting.
Aye.
National Night Out is going to be a great event.
Good job, Geraldine.
Geraldia and Renee are just
You guys are proud of the pavement.
And a lot of terrific support from the businesses as well. And the singers, so it's going to be a great evening.
Can't wait to see where walking taco is.
What?
You don't know the walk?
Doritos. They get Doritos.
That's what I thought, is someone walking around like a taco.
I mean, now that you say that, I think we should go into it, but, so.
Next item is Ornoco Fire Relief Liquor License. I make a motion that we approve the liquor license.
Second.
For Gold Rush Days for a one, one to four day temporary on sale liquor license. Favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh. I make a motion, we accept consent agenda.
Second.
Do the second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Who wants to make the motion adjourned?
I did already.
She already did.
I seconded it.
Lori Dana Show, all right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Oh, dear Lord.
You enjoy your vacation.